Work session. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here. Thank you all for being here. I don't want to say anything about the agenda. Item number one, Heritage Public Library update. Heritage Public Library Director Jesse Kelly and Financial Officer Kathleen Wills.
Board of Supervisors, I'd like to thank you for reviewing this budget from Heritage Public Library. I would like to start by saying the funding we receive from this county is absolutely vital to the life of the library. Most importantly, local funding allows the library to maintain a well-trained and professional staff that serves the residents of New Kent County. Our staff frequently help patrons locate materials from the library and access the Internet, fill out job applications, obtain their passports, and participate in numerous outreach events throughout the community. As you can see from the information we've provided, the library has made great strides to rebound from the COVID-19 pandemic. Annual visitors to the library has increased by forty-five percent. We have greatly improved our program attendance, up-doubled since 2022. We contribute this success to our welcoming and clean facilities, our staff's commitment to customer service, and our effort to provide meaningful resources to all residents of New Kent County. Truly, there is something for everybody at Heritage Public Library. For example, we offer Storytime programs that encourage the development of early literacy for children. For our teens and school-aged children, we offer access to things like homework help, which is a live tutorial system that allows students to get help with their homework and studying. For small business owners, we provide something called Entrepreneurial Mindset Workshop. These classes sort of help people learn how to start their own business and how to market their business. And for our senior library patrons, we're working to combat social isolation. It's a major concern here in New Kent County, as you can read in the New Kent County Community Health Assessment Report. We're partnering with Senior Connections to bring programs free of charge to this to this community. So moving forward, the library is committed to continuing and improving these services for the New Kent residents with level funding for our physical year 2024. And we look forward to offering these services and others free of charge for our residents we serve here in New Kent County. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions?
So are you here to ask for any money?
No, no asking.
No extra money, right?
Sir.
You're not asking. You're not asking for any extra money, right?
No, sir. We're asking for level funding for 2024.
You are the man. Thank you, sir. And also, do you guys still offer tutoring to students that are failing in classes?
We do offer tutoring. We have online tutoring, which is a database, but we also have meeting rooms and study rooms that are frequently used to tutor students in the area.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just I just want to thank you for the work that you guys do. It is definitely well-received in the community across the spectrum of ages, so thank you very much for what you do.
Yeah, I guess until you really look at this, you don't really realize how involved the library is with the with the community and all that they do. So again, go along with Mr. Steers here. Thank you for that. Any other questions? If not, thank y'all very much for being here. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda, supplemental appropriation for sewer easement repairs. Director Mike Lang, Mike?
Good morning, everyone. Our annual easement clearing operation has yielded some erosion, some serious erosion and washouts, especially in the Patriots Landing neighborhood. This particular easement is right in the residence backyard. It's on a steep slope. It's just relatively dangerous for the residents and also represents a threat, eventually a threat to the sewer assets there. So this type of repair is something we just don't have in our annual maintenance budget for this year nor next year due to the complexity. We'll have to get an engineer to survey our easements and give us at least some sort of detail to follow on how we can repair these and hopefully do it once and not have to come back. So we're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars for the engineering and the maintenance, hopefully be able to do it with our own crews, but we're not sure yet.
So the erosion is caused by run water, obviously?
Runoff from the subdivision development, yes. We've in the past encountered similar, much more severe, but similar in Brickshire. I don't know if you guys remember that whole thing, but...
That's what I was gonna ask. Is this the same part where you've worked on before?
No, no, it's a similar situation. This is in Patriots Landing, though. Not nearly as severe as it was in Brickshire, but it is a lot closer to the... I mean, it's in the backyard of the residence, so... And some of these, there's a pothole that has washed out. It's about four feet wide and four feet deep, so it's substantial.
Mr. Lockwood?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Is this erosion caused by poor planning on part of the development? Or because it looks like, I mean, the pictures that were provided, it's a lot of stuff's been cut back at the easement.
Yeah, so this was a fill area. This was a lower kind of a depression, and they filled this in to build these homes. Additionally, when they dig out the basement of these homes, they don't haul that soil away. That gets pushed over the hill. So yeah, I would maintain that legally, we could probably find someone else responsible for it, but that doesn't fix our problem.
Advertisement Mike could apply for the position.
I think he's referring there for accounting attorney. There is storm sewer in the area, so it's not coming off the road. It's coming out of the yards, and it's coming also out of the gutters. All the gutters are piped to the back of the yard.
Well, that would... I mean, I understand, you know, the sense of urgency to get it repaired and get it done, but, you know, I would think that whoever designed the topography should maybe bear some responsibility.
I can certainly get with Mr. Lang and look into that.
I'm willing to explore that as well.
Yeah, because I've got some runoff in my yard as well.
Yeah, you know, we went through it all over in Brickshire, and we ended up footing the bill anyway, so... We just need to go ahead and get it fixed. If there's a discussion to be had with the developer and the engineer, I would be willing to engage in that.
I think the worst thing about these is that, you know, they're all gone trying to find who...
I know. Guess who gets stuck holding the bag?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody blames everybody else.
Definitely something...
Yeah, no bonds or anything on them.
Definitely something we will be keeping an eye on in future plan review where the storm sewer is discharged and that sort of thing.
When you said runoff within the yard and gutters being directed to the backyard, you're talking about the gutters on the people's house?
On the homes, yeah.
Okay, not the gutters curb gutters?
No, no, those are piped underneath down to the bottom of the slope. And those have been problematic here in the past as well. They had a separation, and somebody fell in one. There was a lawsuit.
And I guess my hesitation is if we fix this person's yard, because the way they've directed their drains, their gutters, was to keep the next-door neighbor or somebody in the neighborhood from coming back to the county saying, "My yard's eroding," but... Do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying. It's a bad precedent.
Yeah.
It's a bad precedent.
But we would only work within the easement, though.
Our priority is to protect our assets, and we have an easement here. We did not know this erosion was here until we cleared the trees that had been growing for seven or eight years, and so we uncovered it. I feel at least a moral obligation to address it other than putting orange fence around it, you know, forever. But I think it's the kind of thing we're gonna have to keep an eye out in the future, both in plan review and as we're clearing, and just be prepared to deal with.
Because I think there's some similar issues in Rochambeau and a couple lots there, but that's more the developer there because poor planning with the way the water...
Correct. We don't have any water lines in the backyard, you know, in the backyards of Rochambeau. Everything's in the street, so yeah, no sewer in Rochambeau either.
Because I think there was, it was probably a year and a half ago, there were a lot of pictures of my house that was pretty much flooded underneath, and it was the way the water was directed coming down the street and then going across their yard instead of making it to the corner.
Right, right, and they have ditches. They don't have curb and gutter, so it's a little different.
Right.
You know, they have a little different setup.
And I don't believe VDOT has taken over that neighborhood yet on the roads? Because I would think that would be up to the developer before the state would take the roads over to correct any drainage issues with the...
We would hope, yeah.
Well...
Those are calls I get about every month. Who is responsible for the storm drainage in my yard or in my ditch? So...
No, it's VDOT once they take over the roads.
Yeah, but when those storm pipes extend out of the road between people's homes, then they say it's the homeowners homeowners association. So that was the round and round we did over in Brickshire, and eventually we said we have to fix it because the sewer was gonna collapse there. So I don't want to get in that situation here. I'd like to... And I'd like to think it's gonna cost less than seventy-five thousand dollars, but I want to be prepared.
That's what I was gonna... I hope so.
I want to be prepared, and there's, you know, I gave you two pictures. They're separate. Those are separate instances of the erosion, so... And we're gonna look at some vegetation on the slope as well, that's, you know, to help prevent future erosion.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Page?
If we have any more discussion, I have a motion. A move that we appropriate up to seventy-five thousand dollars for sewer easement repairs. Do I have to put the location?
Patriots Landing.
In Patriots Landing.
Mr. Chair, before we vote, why do we need to have... Why do we need to get surveyed and engineered beforehand? Contractor, you can't just get a contractor in there?
We need to locate our easement so we know we're working within our easement. And yeah, I want somebody with some experience with stormwater management to give us a proper detail so that when we repair this, we don't have to come back every year and fix it. You know, I don't want to... I want to be done with it. Fifteen years is all I need. So but I want to be done with it and have something that's gonna work, and we don't have to get... We don't get called back continuously to deal with.
So one more. So when you say someone with stormwater experience, are you talking about possibly somebody downstairs in this building with experience or going?
No, no, we've got a quote from Bowman, who does stormwater design. So they'll, you know, they'll be able to give us a good recommendation.
Okay. All right, well, no other questions. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Dominion Energy Easement, Olivet Church Road. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This item is really a heads-up for what's gonna be on your agenda next month for public hearing. Dominion has identified the need for an additional power line to stabilize the electrical grid in Land Bay Five of farms in New Kent and also Olivet Church Road, a portion of Olivet Church Road. In order to run the additional line to that land bay, Dominion will need an easement from New Kent County. If you're familiar with our water tower on Olivet Church Road, we also have a pump station on Olivet Church Road, too. But the easement will actually run through the lot that contains the water tower, and it's just a twenty-foot easement that runs the length of the lot and that will ultimately go out to Olivet Church Road. A public hearing is required to give Dominion an easement. Being that Dominion is a private company, by law, we're required to conduct a public hearing. So it's... No money is being proposed, but the benefit definitely is improved power, electrical service in this area of the county. Also, in your packets, there is a plaque showing on the last page of the agreement, the easement agreement, there is a plaque showing the location of the easement, and you can see how the property backs up to Land Bay Five as well.
Any other questions? I think we definitely need to work with Dominion on this. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you.
Item four, draft text amendment to Chapter Twenty-Six Elections of the New Kent County Code. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a small text amendment that would come before you next month, too, in public hearing. As you are aware, Hopewell Baptist Church has constructed a new church facility right beside the existing church. But with the new facility, the church has expressed an interest in the polling location being changed to the new facility, which has a different address. And we list the address in our state, in our county code for all polling places. So we would need to do a code amendment to change the address of the polling place. We would also have to, once the ordinance is passed, if it is approved, we would have to send this to, send the ordinance to the Attorney General's Office and get approval for the new location as well. I don't anticipate any problems. If you're familiar with Hopewell Baptist Church, the old church is right at the corner of Macon Lane and Hopewell Road. The new church is on the other side of Macon Lane, so they're right beside each other, so I don't anticipate any issues, but there is a process we have to go through. So just wanted to bring this to your attention. It's something you'll see on the agenda next month.
Again, I think that's a no-brainer.
We don't need any more hiccups in District One.
No, no, and also I forgot to mention the registrar will also be required to notify every single voter in that district by mail and as soon as it's approved by the Attorney General's Office.
Well, it'll be that precinct. You won't have to do the whole district.
Right, just that precinct.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Wow. Other business. Mr. Hathaway, do you have anything?
I have none, sir.
Wow. Yay. I try.
Well, would like, you know, as far as the budget, I think we had a great retreat last week. We have advertised for a public hearing that will also be on your agenda next month. If there's anything that you'd like me to look at, just let me know, and I can run those scenarios. Rebecca and I can run those scenarios for you.
Oh, I do have one thing.
Oh, okay.
Our June meeting? I think it's the twelfth?
Yes.
Any chance of changing that meeting?
A regular meeting?
Yeah. My son's graduating, turning eighteen, so we're taking a guys' trip. To the Thursday or before? Sorry.
The Thursday after?
Thursday. I'm going the eleventh through the fourteenth. But I'm not.
Planning Commission, yeah.
No, the budget should be adopted by the...
The eighth? Sorry, thank y'all. Thanks, everybody. Make a motion to change our June eleventh, no, twelfth meeting to June eighth at six o'clock.
Let me get... I'll get back with you. I'll let you know today, but if you want to take the vote, then... Can't include options in a motion?
Switch it again in the next meeting. Switch it again to the next meeting.
You withdraw your motion? I thought he did, yeah.
Yeah.
I know there's there's a petition planned, but I think it's the first week in June.
So I withdraw my motion until next meeting.
I'll take a motion at any time now. I meant to adjourn.
Oh, we hit one.
Oh, okay, thank you, Ron, I'm sorry, I missed that one. I'm just asking, so you use twenty-five-minute meetings, that's a little out of the question. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn? Ms. Page? And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Adjourned.